Okay, Eric.
I'll need order.
JoBeth is running a little late. We'll start with signing checks. The payroll checks are already signed and distributed, but the check copies and direct deposit receipts are in here for you guys to look at.
The new breaker, the panel and all that?
No, that's just the solar. Mainz Electric is doing the breaker. Generator, breaker, all that stuff.
But then? Enough to make you sick. Oh, I know.
Which one?
The school.
Yes? Thank you. You guys can start looking at September's bank reconciliations. That, so that report, JoBeth asked to get like a recap report. Well, you guys can look at it too. So this is just all of the different departments, so to speak, in just a summary instead of the detail, but the details behind it. You guys can look at it too. She just asked for something a little bit easier since we're getting close to the end of the year. Uh oh, Nancy forgot to sign that school district one, huh? She should be here any minute. She said she'd be here in a half hour. I don't know what else to move on to. You guys know we got more money.
Yeah. You got my email.
I did.
I'm impressed.
Oh, thanks. I'm pretty happy.
Me too.
Here, you guys can look at the insurance stuff. How's that? That way you're prepared for that when that comes up. It won't come up till towards the end, but that's our renewal package from Health Trust. And of course, like everything else, it's going up.
Sure.
Yeah. I think the health and the short-term disability are going up. Long-term disability in the life, I think, didn't change. And it's less than last year's increase, so I guess that's good. So next Monday and the following Monday, we have public hearings for the unanticipated, accepting the unanticipated funds.
That's, that's advertised, everybody knows.
Online in the paper.
Yeah.
On the bulletin board in the door. Yep.
Yeah, I used to say that.
Yes, it was. We should be getting some more. I've been submitting some more, so.
Well, we got some pressure taking us out of the, out of the block anyways.
Yes. We're, we're back in a decent position.
That's good.
But we've got some big bills coming up, so we still need to get our tax rate set and get those bills out, which we can't because the school district hasn't done their thing yet.
Yeah, I saw your email on there, yeah.
So.
I think last year we had to wait for them too.
We did. Yes, we did.
What an increase.
Yeah. I think last year it was almost 12%, so it is less than last year, but still. almost twelve percent, so it is less than last year, but still. The only other thing I have here is this report that comes from DRA. They came in and did an assessment of the 2023 and 2024 documents or 2023 documents. They did it in 2024. There's not really anything that we have to do with it. But you can certainly look at it. I mean, it's really more of a review of our assessor and the documentation that they collect and review and keep. More than anything, it's property related, but it's more of a we came and looked at your files and this is what we found type of thing. Hmm.
Coefficient of dispersion. I know what that is.
They yeah, they they do some kind of complicated stuff in DRA for the property. It's really them just coming in and looking at all the files and seeing if we have what we're supposed to. And I mean, it's from 2023, so Gary's not even here anymore.
And this is really the assessor. It's not anything.
Correct.
I mean, we hired the assessor, so.
Yes.
Hopefully things will be better. Why would confidential documents be in those files? That makes no sense.
Well, it depends on what you consider confidential. I mean, it's defined differently with different agencies, but like the DD two fourteen, if you're in the military. If you were in the military and you apply for a veteran's exemption, that's confidential. It's not supposed to be in there.
Okay.
So there's different, yeah. Any elderly exemption, nothing regarding income. That's
Okay.
Not supposed to be in there, so.
So our new assessor will get this report. Can you follow up and
Yep.
talk to them about it? Make sure that
Yep.
is we're going to be compliant.
Yep.
Okay, because we are responsible, even though we hire an assessor.
Right.
And the recorded applications for current use, some of those are probably really, really old.
Yes.
Are we even going to be able to get them?
Uh, I don't know. Probably would have to go into the registry's database.
Okay. I would have thought we were complete on tax credit files. This is all from two years ago, from 2023.
Yes.
It doesn't. So we do have an opportunity to respond to these findings?
Yeah, I think there's thirty days, but we're not required to respond.
But should we respond just to say how we could trust them? That we're gonna.
My question is, why is this so late?
Because DRA has been, the people at DRA have been filling in for, filling in at different towns
Yeah.
who are without assessors, kind of like they did with us last year.
Yeah.
Yeah, so everybody's just trying to make sure the things that have to get done, get done, like the assessing, the data, the values, the sales, all that stuff gets done.
And did we have Gary through the end of 2023? Or did they start filling in for him in the fall of 2023?
No, Gary was here into December of 2023. It was 2024 that we didn't have anyone.
Okay, I couldn't remember the timing.
Yeah, it was last year. We didn't have anyone.
Okay. I think I asked the assessor if he could draft a response and then it'd be up to the select board to submit it.
That's fine.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Um, if this was being discussed, it would be done in non-public, but I don't believe there's any discussion. You're just looking at the assessor's recommendation.
I mean, I can already see where this is more compliant according to what I read in that report.
Yes.
Understand that a little better.
That's good. Yeah, and the documentation you provide on the back of the first page goes along with a lot of, with some of the things that were brought out in the
You could understand it better than that.
Oh, you could understand what they're saying better than that than in the report.
Yeah, I hit it down, numbed it, numbed it down.
But it it matches, you know, well, wasn't compliant. We never saw that much detail from our previous successor, so I make a motion that we that we approve um this veteran credit.
That's an elderly credit.
I'm gonna say veteran here. We talked. I thought it was elderly.
Yeah, it's just a mistake there, but it is.
I I recommend that we approve this elderly exemption application.
So.
All in favor?
Aye.
What are they doing the road out here? I got hung up on that.
Culvert? Yeah, there was a sinkhole at the culvert.
Okay.
So they're replacing the whole culvert.
Like, that's what I thought they were doing. Pretty major.
Yeah, they've been out there all day.
Because when I finally got to go by, I was like, where am I?
Yeah.
Wasn't even sure I could get by. It was
Way on the side.
Yep.
Yeah. Uh, this is another document we, it was discussed in non-public, but it's just for signature.
Okay. What was the date of last, the last meeting?
I think it was the sixth. Two pistol permits.
Where are you finding these?
Oh. Sorry.
That's all right.
I thought I was like, God, I could swear I did those already. I didn't look.
Yep. At least you didn't do them again and have me sign this and say, because I'm not tracking who's who they're for in my mind.
Oh, I would have seen if I had already done one.
Yeah.
But um, so we had a resident use tables and chairs this past weekend. They did not I don't know how to say that. They wanted to make a donation to the town instead of doing a, just a deposit and getting it back. So uh, it's got to be accepted by the board. It's a donation of $100.
Okay. I make a motion that we accept the donation of $100 for the use of cables and chairs. All in favor?
Alright.
That's nice of them.
Yeah, I'm like, oh, okay. Can can I do that? I'm like, yeah, absolutely, you can. Meeting minutes from September twenty nine.
And we'll make a motion that we approve the meeting minutes from September twenty ninth. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And on public number one, meeting minutes from September twenty nine.
Just see those minutes for a minute. I make a motion that we approve the meeting minutes from the non-public number one session on September 29th.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
That's all I have for signature.
Okay. Do we have any update on the accessible voting system?
Do. I got an email from the state letting the towns know that the state will be replacing their voting systems and that those voting systems, the old voting systems will be sent out to the towns, um, who will become the custodians of those tablets. Uh, we won't have to send them back and forth to the state anymore. So we will hold on to them. We will be responsible for them and it will be our responsibility to have them programmed for elections. The state will pay for programming for the state and federal elections. The towns and the school districts will just have to pay for theirs. We've, we are not going to be required to purchase our own tablet.
That's good.
Yes. So this year, the programming for the town meeting was $600. They are changing vendors, um, and they haven't chosen that vendor yet. So they can't tell us what the cost will be for programming going forward until that is done.
Okay.
So I'll make sure that that's the cost, the anticipated cost of the tablet is taken out of the budget. And we'll leave money in there for.
For the program.
For the programming.
And maybe 600 or maybe bump that up a little bit.
I'm thinking maybe make it 1,000 just in case.
That makes sense.
Because we don't know.
If it was $600.
This year.
It was 600 this year.
So you know it's gonna be more.
Probably because they're rowing with a new vendor, so who they haven't chosen yet. Kinda makes it hard to, to throw a dart when it's dark and there's no target.
Yep. Okay. Is there any update on the, on a phone system? I know.
Yes, I was able to do some research this week. I talked to two different vendors, one being, um, Bonnage and the other one being Ring Central. They're very similar in their pricing structure. A two-year service contract with Ring Central. Our monthly cost. So they, they'll give you a $5 discount per line if you pay annually instead of monthly, which makes sense to me. It's $240 we would save with four lines. So, um, with faxes also going through the internet, not having a physical fax machine, that faxes would go to the computers.
Do we still use faxes?
We do.
For the town clerk and text collector?
Sometimes more the treasurer, but we also sometimes receive faxes from the state, like the state police and stuff on certain things. And we do fax things that might have confidential information. So we do.
Okay.
So if we paid annually instead of monthly and we went with Ring Central, we'd be looking at approximately $135 a month. And we'd pay it annually, so 135 times 12 is.
And how much are we paying now?
We are paying three, I just looked at the bill, three, 330, an average of 330. It goes anywhere between 330 and 340.
Per month.
Per month, for just the phones. I contacted Fidium earlier in the week and have not gotten heard back from them yet regarding switching from Spectrum. Because Spectrum, right now, we're paying, the fire department pays $110 a month and we pay three, I think we pay three, almost 300 for internet. Maybe 265. It's close to 300.
For, for internet?
Just for internet.
And this phone system already has internet, you tell them.
So this phone system would go over, go through the internet.
So we would still need internet service?
We would still need internet service, but it shouldn't be.
So why is it so hard for you to call out of here with your phones if we have internet here?
Because that's cell service.
Right, that's cellular.
Rather than internet. So the internet would actually come in by the ethernet, like a hard connection.
Yep.
And then we have like, um, the, a booster in this room, right?
Yes.
Which we're trying to check and see if it can be stronger or, or better. So for Ring Central, so right now is our phone service with like.
Consolidated.
Consolidated, okay. So Ring Central would be the phone service plus the actual way the phones interact, the system, phone system, right?
Everything is internet-based, so there's not a separate program.
So you, we wouldn't have to use consolidated or Bearpoint or any other?
No, it would go strictly through the internet.
Okay.
So I got a quote from them. I had gotten a quote from Spectrum that was more expensive than this if I remember correctly. And so what I did essentially is I did some research and said, who's the best VOIP service, right?
Well, something that's gonna be reliable.
Right.
Have good service and.
Right. So Ring Central, Zoom, which I found hard to believe, and, um, Vonage were the, the top, top rated.
And what's the cost of the, the Vonage?
The Vonage is, um, so there's a, the, there's, there is a purchase of the desk phones that would be, um, with Ring Central, it would be $573. So there's that cost. That is to purchase the VOIP phones for them. And then, um, to do the same phone model with Vonage is $460 to purchase the phones. And then it would be with their promo price on a one-year contract, it would be 103 a month. After one year, it would be 145.
So they're comparable?
Yes.
And you didn't get any sense in terms of quality of difference between the two?
No.
Okay.
And they both rated in the top 10, but like 10, 10 and 8, I think they were.
And I did take a quick look at Staples and it looked like the multi-line phones run from 4 to 600 and up.
Yeah.
So.
And you're using regular phone lines?
Right.
Yeah.
So these people, if they come in, well, the internet will be through that. They all use internet, but it'll be, you'll be able to use your phones after it.
The phones run through the internet.
These are the landline phones.
Right, so my question.
Not your, not our cell phones.
You know how you tried to call Adam and you couldn't do it? Wouldn't you be able to make your phone call if we used?
From your cellphone? No.
No.
No, it's still the same.
It's not going to affect your cellphone. If you, if you have a wifi phone, your wifi, if you have your phone set to make calls off wifi, you would be able to.
Should have tried that last time.
Yeah.
We had that disabled online.
So it, it's a, it's a setting on your actual phone, but you have to have a good signal. So.
I never liked them anyways.
We would, we would be able to call Adam if we had a, an actual phone in here.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
You know, we plug, plug the phone into this internet cable and the phone, you, you could essentially just call out on it.
With this price, if we add another phone to it, does it go up? Does it?
Just for the purchase of the phone? Uh, yeah, so Vonage is $20 a month.
If we added a fifth caller.
It's an additional $20 plus the purchase of the phone.
Okay.
Ring Central is the extra, the extra phone plus an additional 20 or 25, 20 or $25 depending on which program we go with. 20, it would be 25 a month, probably. The nice part about these, the nice part about going to a VOIP system is you could use your cellphone. You down, download an app and you could get calls. Someone called me here in the office, I could answer it on my cellphone.
But that wouldn't mean that we can use our cell phones.
That would.
Because we're not tied to those numbers unless we had a.
You know, if you needed to talk to Adam and.
Yeah.
Through.
Yeah.
And that's where I was wondering about, does it make sense to have a line in here?
Yeah.
But it'd be 20, $25 a month plus 125 to purchase a phone.
So is it, is it worth it?
For once a year?
Yeah.
Yeah.
We can unplug her phone and bring it out here.
Could unplug any of the other three phones that don't get used that often.
There you go.
Yeah, but we'd have to have the, well, no, we've got the ethernet. So we, these tie into ethernet, right?
Yes.
Okay. Do we have enough ethernet ports to be able to run the phone system and the computers?
That's a, that's a computer consultant question. I don't know. I would think that I would think that similar to before, the, our IT people said that they would come in and set up a new, right here, to create a phone network, um, a port manage POE and switch. They're saying $475 and then labor to configure the switch, create the VLAN and assist Spectrum with testing. They're saying is $1,000. They're saying it's 1475 for them to do what they need to do, but I can't imagine it's that difficult. Oh, here I have the Spectrum VOIP. It was $220 a month. So there were, theirs was almost double. Theirs was more.
And we could probably get an adapter.
Probably. To split it.
Paul?
$9 on Amazon.
For an adapter for one to two?
We'll split.
Yeah.
Or split, okay.
Yeah.
All right, thank you.
And I asked them about, how easy is this? Is this like a plug and play? Is it something you guys send someone out to install? Is it, she said you get assigned someone who helps you, um, you know, with the implementation and with training. You have, you'll have a service manager. She said it's, it's really not that difficult.
And then you can take, have voicemail messages?
Yes. Voicemail messages, if I don't answer, you would get a similar recording to what you get now. If you wanna talk to so-and-so, if you wanna talk to what?
Does it also send a transcription by email?
Um, I think so. I think so.
Okay. Um, can you transfer calls between lines?
Yes.
Okay. And would you have an, like, right now, we have, I don't understand how, because of when I call, I mean, I still get the same recording no matter which line I call.
And I don't know anything about it because I don't know how it's set up and.
Because we've got actually technically, I think we just have to look at the, what numbers we use and thing.
Yes.
And make sure we're forwarding things or picking them up or whatever, so we don't throw calls. Um, so I think there's some work in implementation.
Um, yes, I mean, the, right now, I tell everyone to use the 2092 number because that rings everywhere. If you call the 7027 number, it only rings three quarters of the time at the town clerk's phone. So if you go to call me on the 7027 number and I'm, it's a Wednesday and I'm sitting at the select board desk, I gotta get up and walk in and answer the phone on the town clerk phone, even though you're calling the select board line.
And I know it's funky and I haven't.
Yeah. So.
So we could, yeah.
And there, there is no one up here that manages our phone system anymore. The guy passed away. It's old, it's antiquated, it's.
Yep.
You know, I was able to like back end some figuring out how to program, like how can I get into the voicemail and how can I, but yeah.
No, I think we definitely need to. I don't have any sense for which of the vendors is better.
I don't either.
They're, they're comparable in terms of price.
I mean, I talked to them both. They both seemed decent. Um, so, yeah.
Paul, what do you have for our business phone system?
So we use an app, uh, called Gorgeous, but Gorgeous gives you the ability to route email through it as well as, uh, VOIP. So, uh, it's kind of a combination.
And we already have our email system, so I don't think we need to change that.
Yeah, it's, it's good for us on the business side because of, uh, generic accounts like info app or sales app that don't go to a specific person.
Mm-hmm.
They, they drop into there. And it also gives us the ability to write macros to answer the same repetitive questions you get all the time. I can hit one button and it answers that question and sends it off to them. So it kinda, it's.
Take a little bit of the AI call service built into it. I don't think we necessarily want to go there.
No, and some of these, some of these guys, they have, you know, beefed up packages where you can add email, you can add group meetings, you can add this, you can, you can add all these things. I'm like, we don't, I don't need that. Like, we have email. You know, I don't, I don't need group meetings because when we do them, we use Zoom. And usually when we're doing them, it's this, you know, it's, so.
Did, were one of these contractors, um, ahead of the other on, in terms of their, um, approval ratings?
Uh, yes, but I don't remember which one. I just picked the top, the top two. I looked at the top two. Well, I, I mean, I looked at the top three, but one was Zoom and I'm like, that just, no.
Yeah.
We've had our issues with Zoom. I mean, that's, you know.
So I, I mean, I guess because you work with them, do you have a sense of which one would be easier to work with?
Well, I only spoke, I mean, they, they both basically had the same, they're offering essentially the same thing. I, I would like to confirm with Ring Central that if we were to pay annually that we get an additional discount because that's a few hundred dollars. That would make sense to me. You're paying it anyway. Um, you know, and then, of course, you know, I don't, I could also go back to Vonage and say, well, you're giving me, you know, a one-year contract at this price. Would you give me a two-year contract? Because their pricing is a little bit better, right? It's like, can you beef up your proposal to make me say, yep, okay, this is the way we're going?
Because it looks over time, Ring Central is better, 135 a month instead of 145.
Right.
A little bit more upfront, $40 more upfront. So I mean, my inclination is to go with Ring Central.
And that's, if, you know, if Vonage comes back and says, nope, we only do one-year contracts, then I would go with Ring Central.
Because we don't wanna be switching.
No.
Couple years.
No. And we can keep the same numbers. They just said it, it could take up to seven to 10 days for the phone carrier to release the number. But our, our, we don't lose phone service. It stays live with them and, yeah, so. And they're comparable, so I, I think it's down to etching away at some of the details and see which ones wanting our business more.
I make a motion that we proceed with one of these. I make a motion that we proceed with one of these V O I P systems and let Jeanette decide whether it's Ring Central or Vonage depending on her subsequent interaction and what deals she can get. All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Aye. Now, I am going to wait until I hear from Phidium, if I hear from Phidium about switching over to them.
I don't know they would do it, well, I don't know if they have a V O I P, do they have a?
I don't know.
Okay.
I, I don't know because no one's called me back yet.
But we definitely should check about them for internet service.
Yes.
And it's, we have Spectrum now.
Right.
Um, did they switch to fiber optic when that was put in?
Did?
Spectrum, or are they still using the old line?
I have no idea.
I got, I got my, I got fiber optic.
I did too, but I had to go with service, have them connect it, and I don't know if we ever did it in the municipal building.
No.
Yeah, I don't know.
So, that's a good question.
But I'm, I mean, we had talked at the last meeting that we need to get internet at the, at the highway garage. So I was going online to do that, and the rates that they quoted online were much higher than what I've seen advertised, so I didn't wanna do it online. And I reached out to the people who were involved with the, um, the broadband grant.
Yeah.
And bless you, bless you, and, um, again.
Excuse me.
And, um, I'm just, I'm waiting to hear back.
Yeah.
So.
I'm comfortable waiting to hear from, before you proceed, I could amend the motion to include checking with Phidium.
Well, yeah, and, and Phidium may say, we don't, we don't have a V O I P service.
Yeah.
Which is fine, I just wanna make sure that if we sign up to go with this service, switching over to Phidium isn't gonna be an issue. I can't imagine it would be, but I like to get the definitive, yes, that works.
It shouldn't, because it doesn't matter who's on the other, you know, we've got the phone service here, and then we've got the internet connection.
Right, and all the phone needs is the internet, correct.
But we should be looking to make sure we're on
Yes.
fiber optic system and check options with Spectrum and Phidium and.
Well, Spectrum, we already know.
I mean, but
But, yeah.
See what Phidium can do for us.
If anything.
And if Spectrum can give us any better, and better pricing within that, all of our buildings.
I won't lie, my experience personally and so far professionally with Phidium has not been very positive. So, I'm not sure about anybody else, but I, they screwed up installation stuff at my residence and now I can't get anyone to call me back here, so.
Yeah, we're pretty seamless for me when I switched.
You would think it would be pretty simple.
When they were really concentrating on getting people going, so they may have reallocated resources elsewhere.
Right.
I have to go with Jeanette on this.
You're having trouble too.
Yeah, I, I just.
Yep.
Took three guys to come in and finally get it set up, start with.
When I left, when I, um,
Yeah.
Terminated my Netify contract, they said, we'll leave the satellite, you know, the little dish there, cuz in a year when they jack their prices up, you might be back.
Yeah.
So.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So.
We'll see. Okay, but that's good progress, at least we've got some options.
Yes.
And we already talked about highway garage internet.
Yep.
Um, the, um, Jim used with the North Star Canine Connection?
She did get back to me, um, you know, I asked her for details. So, um, right now, she pays the town of Whitefield twenty dollars each time she uses the community room. Um, she said that was averaging about four hundred dollars a year in payments, but now she also does drop-in training, so it would be more than that. Um, she has a key, so she manages her own access and communicates her schedule to avoid any conflicts. She's been, uh, working with the Whitefield community, or the White, in Whitefield with the community room for about three years, no complaints. And she's responsible for and always does a complete cleanup of the space, including vacuuming, wiping down surfaces, so on so forth, every class. She is fully insured. Her typical schedule year round is usually one day a week, either Saturday mornings or a weekday evening. She currently has three separate classes on Saturday mornings with six to eight dogs in each class. Following, uh, a few hours of use, or totaling a few hours of use. And then seasonally, um, she has some occasional downtime of one or two months where she transitions into single or smaller style classes. She requires all dogs but complete vaccination records before they can be in any class. Um, and then she said that she's flexible and happy to discuss a fair usage fee and scheduling to ensure that it works for everyone.
How often do we get requests to use it on Saturday mornings?
It varies, I mean, in the colder months, more often than in the warmer months, because people have parties, but it's not necessarily in the morning. Um, you know, sometimes it could be a twelve to six, or a two to four, or a occasionally it's a morning. Um, the Dalton neighbors group sometimes will use it, if we do an event, it might be late morning, but, I mean.
So if people know that it's not available, well, that would work, for example, that would work.
Yeah.
It's not gonna create conflict.
I don't think so, I mean, it's a first come, first, first served thing.
Yeah.
I mean, if someone had it booked every Saturday for the entire winter and someone else came in and said, hey, I wanna book it, and it's already booked, then it's already booked, I mean, would he?
Yep. Um, I did, I was talking to a friend who has a dog, who's used her, and he said it works really well, I think that room is small and they thought it would be cold in the winter or something. Um, said it's always cleaned up afterwards and she's really responsible and, wrote very highly of her. He kind of thought that she knows she's got a really good deal financially with Whitefield, so we might be able to ask a little bit more. But I don't know what that
Yeah.
that would look like. Um, I think it's good to have facility used.
Just, just a question for clarity, this is a business?
Yes, dog training.
Yeah.
So I, just a comment if I, if I could, so I don't personally have a problem with it. I would ask the select board to think about what happens when a business that you don't agree with asks for the same opportunity?
The, our policy for property use does allow use, um, does allow businesses to use it, but they're required to pay a usage fee.
Understood.
Even if it was a business that, I, I, I mean, it's, it's not.
I don't think we're in the business of adjudicating what businesses are, businesses are, except on what aren't.
Right, that's what I was trying to say, thank you.
That, that, that's what I'm trying to make sure is the case.
Yeah.
I'm thinking of it from a pure business standpoint, when we, if we allowed the Boy Scouts to sell cookies on the sidewalk, well, now I have to allow the next business there. Um, I don't know if that's the case, I don't, and, and the next business could be something really inappropriate, right? So it's, that, that's all I'm trying to raise.
Well, and there are guidelines, there are ordinances and guidelines that, that have to be followed, obviously.
As long as you guys feel good about it, I just, I just wanted to raise it as a potential concern.
I'm, I mean, we've had organizations hold like cookouts here.
Yeah.
And things, you know, getting Casella's whole, held cookouts and.
Yeah, I I look at, like you, I look at it from a business standpoint. I think it's an opportunity to earn revenue that helps offset the expenses that we already have.
Oh, I love that part of it.
And, and I think it's, I think it's a good thing, I think it's a really good thing.
No, thi- think of the worst thing in your mind for a business, and if they wanted to now come. That, that, that's all, that's all I was going, going with this.
Yes.
And I think it's yeah. I mean, I'm thinking, you know, we've.
We've got a grant, does this person do with dogs?
Obedience.
Yeah. Father is gonna bring it up too, do they have insurance?
Yes.
Yeah, she's fully covered, she said.
Fully insured, yep, she's fully insured. So she would have to give us her insurance certificate, yep.
Yeah, and a C F I with us named on it.
Yes, list is the insured, yep. Yeah, I, I think it's a good, I think it's a great idea.
But, me too.
Yep.
I'm thinking of the bad idea that could follow it, that's all.
I'm just, I'm really, and maybe we'll have to take this offline, but I'm trying to think like, one of the worst, like, and I'm just, I'm thinking. I, I really can't.
I mean, I'm, I'm thinking something that, what comes to mind is like a porn shop or something, but we're not selling merchandise, I mean, I think we could make that distinction.
Yes.
This is.
Well, and I.
You guys feel good about it, that's all.
I mean, we're, and it's not, we're not gonna offer the building, you know, seven days a week from
Right.
nine to five to sell merchandise.
And, and you have to keep in mind, if it doesn't work out, then, you know.
We can.
Yeah, my, my only point was, if you, once you open that door.
Yeah.
Right, you're opening the door for all kinds of business, potentially.
Well, and the, the door, I mean, it's in the policy already, so the door is
It's already open.
Open.
Yep.
Yeah. Yeah, it's not like going from resident use only to, no, let's open it to businesses and it's, it's there already, yeah.
Thank you.
Actually, we have a copy of the policy here, so I'm inclined to support it.
Yeah, I do. I have like, uh, flaws in there that the select board has, I don't know how to show out the word, the rights to, uh, null and void any business at any time, in other words.
Well, that would almost be like we're signing a contract, and it.
We could do this for maybe three-month periods, and then it's renewed.
Let's see how it works out, yeah.
Yeah.
Three or six months, I mean, three months initially, and then we can, because on the facility use form, which is basically our agreement, um, we put down dates, so.
Yeah.
I was, yeah, I'm just, I just, my mind got going, listen to everybody, you know, and that.
Yeah, it says here.
Paul said you, you open it for other businesses.
Yeah.
The next thing you know, you got all these different business obligated, but now the town needs this rooms too for something and.
Our use always comes first.
Okay.
And that's clear in the agreement. It does say in here, town property used for business purposes are subject to fees ranging from one hundred to five hundred dollars with no reimbursement. Yeah.
And obviously town meeting day is out, things like that.
Yeah.
Yeah, so.
So we ready to move forward with the positives? Okay, I make a motion that, um, we support this facility use. Um, do we wanna leave it at twenty per hour or ask for twenty-five?
We're at twenty for the first three months, see how it goes.
Well, so she, she says in here she pays twenty dollars each time she uses the room. I don't know if that's like for each class, or is she using it all morning for twenty dollars, or is it?
Be inclined to say twenty per, I don't know, assuming class is probably about an hour.
Mm-hmm.
Per hour.
Cause in winter months, you know, you got the heat and everything, they take it.
I would say, I think twenty dollars an hour is a decent rate, what do you think, Paul?
Rate up, guy, that's too cheap.
Well, you have to remember, she's.
You get for twenty, you can't get a Happy Meal for twenty dollars.
Yeah, but she's in business for herself, if you do twenty dollars an hour and she starts classes at eight, she ends at two, that's a hundred and twenty bucks.
Oh, I thought they were only an hour long.
But she does multiple classes.
Oh, I got you.
And we're talking about per hour, I think, rather than
Yeah.
Per use, right.
Yeah, then the.
I mean, I
Not terrible.
We could ask if she could do twenty-five. Cuz that's a big room to keep.
Okay. Okay.
And if that's too much for her, go to back down to twenty?
Yeah.
Okay, um, so I make a motion that we accept this facility use application, um, asking for twenty-five dollars per hour, um, which could be negotiated down to to twenty if necessary, um. Do I have a second?
No, second.
All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Aye. I mean, I think it's good to get people in the building and.
Absolutely. Yep.
Just saying that Dalton does exist.
Okay.
And it's good to have dogs that are trained.
Yes, it is.
Okay, um, we've not had a building committee meeting since our last meeting.
Right, we did have
Of time.
We did have a workday, um, there were three of us here on October fourth. Uh, we pressure washed the brick in the front of the building, cleaned the brick in the front of the building, it came out pretty nice. Um, definitely does need to be tuck pointed, so still working on that. Um, I do not believe anyone showed up at the works, work session on the eleventh. Um, I did get a text from Kathy letting me know that her and Bob were on the way, but I don't believe Brian went out and bought any of the materials, so, um.
So we had to fix the overhang, right?
Correct.
Okay, or painted the door, or fixed the grate.
Correct.
Or the
Correct.
Metal.
Yep.
Okay.
So, I pressure washed the brick in the front of the building, my job is done.
Do we need pressure washing on the other three sides?
We will, yeah, we will.
Maybe spring.
Um, yeah, unless we get a nice day and I'm looking for something else to do.
Okay.
So, yeah, um, but yeah, we used the cleaner, uh, sprayed that on and then pressure washed it and it came, it came clean, it looks pretty nice.
Thank you.
So, yeah, you're welcome, okay. Uh, so we'll probably, I don't know if, maybe we'll try and have another meeting in November or something, um, and see what happens, maybe we'll.
I'm thinking that probably that work's gonna wait until next year, given that it's already
Probably.
Over.
Uh, Ron did say that he would come and just take the door off the hinges and take it to a shop and spray it. He said it would be easier to do that, so I don't know when he's planning on doing that, but he said he would, so.
Okay. And there's nothing that has to be done before winter?
No.
Okay. Um, conservation commission?
No, I didn't get any more.
Okay.
And what should brings me up, uh, he emailed you on monies that he wanted, whatever happened to that?
Um, to go, the one to ask Casella for reimbursement for the
Yeah.
We never acted on it, would you like to move forward and go to Casella on that?
No, I don't, like, we should do, that's his problem, he, he created it.
Well, it's the town, I mean, the conservation commission is the town, it's, was a, the whole commission. It's not one individual.
No.
Eric? Um, planning board hasn't met since our last meeting, so there's no update. Post-committee agreement, we had the open house on Saturday.
We did, couple of us, um, so, you know, our last meeting, we saw the survey and we summarized it. We'll be talking more about that at our eleven-three meeting, uh, ten-four, as you just referenced, we held the open house, um, candidly, a little disappointed in the turnout, um, you know, hope for more people to be able to share their voice. Uh, all meeting minutes are posted, um, even though they haven't been formally approved, that was just, uh, in an effort of transparency. Um, but they'll be approved on November third. Uh, ten-twenty-three, it was decided that from six-thirty to seven-thirty, uh, that, that we will have an additional, uh, open house, that was a request. Uh, that, that we will have an additional, uh, open house, that was a request made by the. Small number of folks that did show up, that they thought we needed in the evening and. We decided that we'd be happy to do that, um, understanding that maybe the whole committee can't be there.
I was just gonna say, I had planned to attend, but now I have a conflict, I need to be in Lancaster by seven.
It's okay.
Always, I could come for ten minutes, but.
I, I think in the end, Joe, if you really think about what we're trying to do there, we're trying to just capture. Their voice and really one person could do it, but the more we have there to represent, I think the better, um, to just capture that information.
Well, I think if there's other committee members, then I will bow out that night, if that's all right, can you?
When, what date is that?
Uh, October twenty-third, so next week.
On Thursday?
Seven thirty. We also, uh, that same day, uh, the fourth, I went and I posted it at the transfer station. Uh, because that was one of the requests that came out of it as well, that with the number of people that go through transfer station, they'd like to see it posted there, so.
Yep.
Trying to provide every opportunity we can for people to have their voice heard, uh, before we get down to the nitty gritty of. Building an actual agreement, um, side note, personal note, I actually. Spent time yesterday and went over and walked the facility in Bethlehem, uh, with the crew over there, uh, so it's pretty educational for myself as well. Like I said, next meeting is eleven-three.
Okay, thank you.
Welcome.
Okay, we have the solar panels on the highway department.
Yes.
Are they attached to the grid yet?
No.
Still waiting for ever source.
It takes another year.
No, they're, they're not attached to the grid yet, they're working on finalizing that and, um. Yeah.
And with that, we've got the generator being installed.
The, I think the generator and everything is already installed, we just have to have the propane part taken care of.
Go get a tank and all of that.
Get a tank and. A provider of propane and then, um, Jeff, who works on the highway department. Should be able to do all of the connections for us because he's licensed.
So we'll actually buy a tank versus leasing one from the propane company?
Is that a question?
Yeah, I mean, I know for mine at home, it's, I have a tank, but it's not mine, it belongs to the propane company.
I. I don't see why not, I mean, there's pros and cons to each way, I guess.
I don't have a. Preference either, I'm just curious.
The board has to approve the expenditure if we decide to buy a tank.
Okay. Probably better to just use the propane company one than they're responsible for it. Maintenance and upkeep and.
Like I said, pros and cons.
Pick it up.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yep.
Okay. So I'll let Adam know that we can just get a tank.
With a propane company?
Yeah.
Yeah. Are we just checking prices on propane companies? Or are we going with? Who does our other propane, is it CN Brown?
CN Brown does our propane.
Okay.
Does CN Brown do our propane? Superior does our propane.
Yeah, because you still have to have inspection.
Yeah.
Before CN Brown will start delivering the propane.
Right.
You know more about, I do, but there's something about that.
Yeah, uh, Superior does our propane.
And what's, what are they charging?
I don't know, we haven't gotten a fill-up yet.
Okay. Cause Jeanette and I were talking and. I get a substantially better price of CN Brown on my home propane than you do with another company.
Yes.
I just locked in a contract.
Yes.
For the pre-buy. So that's maybe worth looking around.
What do you have?
I have CN Brown. And when I. Had to replace my furnace and I switched to propane, they had the best price, I checked around, but that was quite a few years ago. All right, and there's no update on the hazard mitigation?
Uh, I actually reached out to June yesterday because I was working on the budget. For next year and I wanted to find out if we were gonna get the invoice this year, if I needed to carry the expenditure next year, and she said it would be next year, so.
Okay.
Regrettably, she said regrettably, it will be a twenty-twenty-six plan, and I said, that's fine, I, I don't think it matters to us, I just. Need to make sure I include it in the budget.
It sounded like she was pretty busy.
Yes.
Lots of towns.
Yes.
But I'm thankful she does this work. It saves us a whole lot of time and effort.
Yes.
And she's very good. Okay, FEMA repair funding, we have good news because we.
Received.
We have the two-hundred-and-twenty-three thousand, right?
Thirty-three.
Two-thirty-three.
Or receive the sixty-nine-nine, which we already did a meeting for.
Yeah.
We have a meeting on Monday at five-thirty.
Yeah.
Uh, so that public hearing is for the receipt of two-thirty-three, two-fifty-five. And then we have a meeting the following Monday. I believe at six-thirty for the additional five-hundred-and-thirty thousand that we received last week. Well, about ten days ago.
Good.
Yeah.
So it's finally coming in.
Yes, it is.
And you're still working on documentation for reimbursement for ongoing expenses?
Yes. Yes, I am.
Good.
We found some discrepancies in the labor that they said we spent. And what I'm saying we spent, and I found that instead of just using the spreadsheet that I gave them, they. Made their own spreadsheet and they put in the same labor rate for everyone, I'm like, well, that doesn't work. So they're fixing that now.
And that's for future payments, reimbursements. Rather than existing, or will they modify?
Well, they'll modify it.
So they'll give us more?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Yep, good, I'm glad you're on top of it.
Gotta check everything, look under every feather, that bird.
Okay, um, and did we get the head walls in for the mitigation work?
The head walls were delivered last week, they are working on them, so yes, they are working on them, they're coming along.
Okay. Under new business, the tax bill, PDF software upgrade?
Yep, so we had talked before about. Providing emailed copies of tax bills to residents who wanted it. Um, giving them the option, uh, the state statute says that you can provide emailed copies. Or it, an avenue for them to receive email copies of their. Of property tax bills in lieu of mailing them. As long as you have something from the owner in writing stating that they want it. So Avatar, which is who we already use, does have, um. The capability of upgrading our system. To provide PDF invoice and paperless notifications to our residents. So residents would receive an email similar to what they receive for vehicle. Renewal or a dog license renewal, and it, it would allow them to then. Go into the system, click on a button, receive a PDF of their tax bill that they could then save or. And or print and then pay online, just like you have the option of paying online now.
And. What is the cost?
The cost to do this is. Five hundred dollars.
Per year?
Yes.
And right now, we're spending.
Right now, stamps are seventy-eight cents a piece. And I mail out, I think I print. Almost eleven hundred tax bills. So, I mean, we're, we're spending, I think I, I think I go through almost ten, ten rolls of stamps, Mandy?
Yeah.
Almost ten rolls of stamps when we do, when we mail out tax bills, plus the cost of envelopes, plus the cost of. Printing the tax bills.
So we're spending over seven hundred.
Oh, easily.
Twice a year.
Easily.
Yeah, I'm just.
And I'm not saying, and that's not to say that everyone will opt in. But it gives people the option. To do it.
And can you have? Well, actually, I'm just thinking of the mortgage companies where it's escrowed, that they handle it, but they handle it through the kiosk.
They handle, yeah, theirs are handled.
They already get the notification, they go into the kiosk and pull it.
But even so, the tax bills still have to be sent to the residents.
Right.
Even, even if it's paid via an escrow account.
Yeah, but what I was thinking of is two emails for one property, one to the. Mortgage holder and then.
Oh, no.
But you wouldn't have to do that, cause they use this kiosk.
Correct, or they contact me and say, send us your file, your data file.
Yeah.
Which is usually what happens, and I send them the data file and then they send me all those checks.
Can written permission be in an email form?
Uh, I've gotta review the RSA again. I think it requires an actual signature.
Well. So what we could conceivably do is send this out with our tax bills and give people to. Respond if they want their tax bills emailed and provide the email address?
Yes. Yes, I have to review the statute again, but yes, I do believe that that would work.
I make a motion that we proceed with implementation of this, um, avatar. System upgrade so that we can email.
I mean, I have residents that ask if they could just do a auto pay, like, yeah, we haven't, we haven't found that technology yet. That'd be great, though.
All in favor?
Aye. Town resident text proposal? Uh, that was, did you second that, Eric?
Yes.
Okay, um, so this program is called Text My Gov, this guy's been calling me forever. Finally, I said, yeah, I'll do a fifteen-minute spiel with you. So Text My Gov is essentially a. Program that allows us to push messages out to residents who sign up for it. On their phones, they would get a text message like. Statewide fire ban.
Or.
Reminder, the town meeting is tonight, or.
Tax bills are due.
Tax payments are due, or whatever, um. So it allows citizens to find information using the smart texting solution. They can ask questions via text messages and then receive automatic responses, um. It allows citizens to report issues like a stray dog, a pothole, or whatever, that they could text via their phone, oh, I can imagine. Um, agencies can customize a text thread to help gather important information such as citizens' names. Address of reported issue, uh, and allow citizens to send a picture of an reported issue. And it automatically notifies the correct department of the reported issue via email or text message. It sends alerts, giving agencies the ability to send out notifications or alerts as a text message. And it allows the agencies to create different notification groups like city events or county elections, citizen, and citizens. Um, who can choose what notification, notification group to opt into.
So being able to push out messages seems like it fits in with the, um, hazard mitigation plan, you know, for notification. Things that are going.
Emergencies and things.
Like the.
Fire ban.
Fire ban.
Yeah.
Roads.
That nobody seemed to know about.
Yeah.
But I don't think we have the capacity to handle incoming text messages.
Only if they send it to.
Well, and, and.
I mean, they send it to Adam or me.
Well, but that's your personal fault.
Yes, and I don't give it to very many people.
Right, that's what I'm saying.
Yes.
And.
So it would be Adam or person.
But, but do they have the capability to start, I mean, would they rather have a phone call? With issues or an email versus a text message, it's one more layer of. Things that they have to.
I'm not sure.
And in terms of the town, because our landlines don't accept text messages.
Correct.
Or would they with the VOIP?
I'm not sure, I didn't print out absolutely everything. I'm not sure.
Even if they could, I'm not sure we have the capacity, staffing capacity to. Handling wing text messages.
You mean, you don't want me to sit here and text with people there?
Yep.
Um, yeah, I mean, and I don't know if that's like part of the. Part of the service, but maybe you can turn it off, I don't, or restrict it.
I think that'd be an important question. I think the other thing, what's the cost on this?
It would be. Twenty-eight hundred dollars initially and then eighteen hundred dollars per year. And it would be a three-year term. After that, it would go from year to year. Customers required to put the Text My Gov widget on the website.
Which sounds like that's allowing people to text in.
Probably.
So I wonder if they have a different price range, if it's only outgoing text.
Yeah, I'm not sure.
And are there any competitors out there? That's a lot of money.
It is.
I think, uh, what we need to know and everything gets out, we get the calendar. Ron's good about the fire department section, um. I'm personally against this, I think it's just nothing but trouble.
I think it's. I think it's slightly invasive. I think it's like. You sign up and you just, you get all these texts, it's like everybody's texting everybody and it's like.
It's overwhelming, yeah.
It is, it's, yeah, I, I don't know.
I know, I. Stores that want, you know, me to. Get a discount for giving them my email address and it's, no, thank you, I don't wanna get one more email, I'm not getting email.
I get five hundred a day, it's enough.
Yeah, okay.
So this isn't one.
Yeah, that's a lot, if it were less money, I. I mean, I see the value of being able to send texts out, but we'd have to get people's phone numbers, we don't have that on file. Okay.
Yeah, I get plenty of people who get upset when they receive an email from the town telling them that they need to pay an invoice for their car registration. I have some people calling, yelling at me about that, I'm like, you signed up for it, I don't know, take it off.
Cause it's in the system.
Take it off, okay.
Okay. All right, solid waste disposal surcharge and municipal reimbursements.
Yes, so, as required by House Bill Two, starting January first, twenty-twenty-six. All customers who dispose of solid waste at a permitted. New Hampshire Solid Waste Landfill, Waste-to-Energy Facility or Incinerator. Will be required to pay a dis- disposal surcharge of three fifty per ton of solid waste. As customers, municipalities and solid waste districts will be required to pay these surcharges. Municipalities will then be able to request quarterly reimbursements of these surcharges. Um, upon submission of invoices and proof of payment. DES is currently drafting rules to implement the program.
So basically, we have to pay it and then we have to file to get reimbursement?
Yeah.
Full reimbursement?
That's what it says.
Yeah.
It's like a lot of work.
Across the board, they're all doing it, right, for no matter where you go.
Yeah.
So, three fifty per ton. So, another thing we just need to keep in mind when we work on the budget.
Yep. And even if we request reimbursement, that'll come in as revenue, we still have the expenditure we have to.
Out for.
Yep. Okay. That just seems like a lot of administrative work on our part and the state.
Or nothing.
Why don't they just exempt municipalities?
Cause that would be smart. Just saying.
All right. Insurance. What are we looking at in terms of? Increases.
So. For. for.
Do you see that?
It's less than last year. Um, short-term disability increase is five point five percent. No increase in long-term disability or life insurance, no change in benefit uh, advantage, advantage administrative fees, which is free. That's the F S A program, so as long as they have the medical coverage, it's free. So our increase for health is nine point two percent. And then the short-term disability is five point five.
Cause we went up like eleven percent last year.
It was almost twelve, I thought.
Yeah. So.
Twelve point three.
Was that it last year? Okay, yeah.
Good memory. So overall, the rate increase is eleven point three percent.
No, nine point, does it say eleven point three there?
So the January renewal groups experience an overall rate change of eleven point three percent.
Oh, that's the groups.
Oh, that's the whole group.
Yes.
So in terms of what we have to pay.
Right.
Cause some people have other.
Right, some people will be more than us.
Okay. We offer dental insurance, right?
We do not.
Okay.
Cause it was expensive and the town would pay a hundred percent.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, they look at it.
Look at it.
Yep. Yep.
We had a, we had a, a curly right, so.
I am sorry.
So we don't.
I don't usually do that.
I know. So we don't have to.
We don't need any act. We just have to budget for it, cause we really.
Well, we will have to sign it, sign off on it, but it, we're not required to. I don't think we're required to respond. If we want to make any coverage changes, those must be communicated no later than November fourteenth. And then December twelfth is the deadline for submitting the signed renewal transmittal. So just like last year.
And at least, you know, like, some of the schools are getting hit with like three hundred thousand increase ac- across the pools that covers school health insurance.
So that, that was.
Which is a different company than Health Trust.
Well, yes, but that's the assessed or unassessed pools that was actually, uh, it was actually a bill. And we talked about it in the select board meeting, being unassessed or assessed, one is that the risk pool, the health carrier can come back and say, well, we had an additional five million dollars in claims last year, so now you guys need to pay us back for that. But our, ours is not, we don't, we don't have that type of policy. Our policy doesn't allow them to do that. It's, it's a risk pool. It's, it's just like investing your money, right? If you if you have a whole lot of money and your, your claims were low, you're not giving us money back, so. Yeah. Yeah, I thought that was pretty interesting. So there's that. Um, and then miscellaneous updates, we received uh, a notice from N H Recycles, which used to be N R R A, the garbage recycling group. Um, their dues are going up. So I think we have, I think we're in the minimum dues category. So it's going up from one twenty-five to two hundred dollars. And then the per capita rate's going up from eight cents to nine cents per resident. So a small increase for us there. Um, Amber Sand Gilman Hydro, they submitted, um, their dam safety surveillance and monitoring report for the Gilman project. It was reviewed and, um, found that it follows the outline and requirements for continued project operation by the Federal Energy Regulatory Commission. And I believe that is all that I have. That's it.
We have any other old or new business? Any public comments?
I was just wondering, what were you talking about with the conservation committee and the?
I'm sorry, say again.
What, what was the topic about this conservation committee and Casala and this thing? What was that about?
The Conservation Commission had sent the select board a memo asking for us to submit, um, invoices to Casala for payment of work that they did in the prior years. Um, to us, for environmental assessments of the property for the proposed site of the landfill.
Wouldn't that fall under reviewing town, um, I would say research to make sure that it was appropriate?
Mm-hmm, yeah, I mean, the commission did what they're charged to do.
Then I guess I need a better explanation as to why Tom and Eric are not okay with that. With reimbursing.
Because he did not come before the board to have it approved. He's been working on his his own agenda, so to speak. He will not come and get permission from the board, which is required.
Is it required? What's the RSA?
No, um, it's not, because this is work that the Conservation Commission did using their trust fund account, so it did not require board approval.
So he can use his account and.
Well, it's a town's account. It's not he. It's the commission. It's a town's account. It's a commission that acts on behalf of the town. So, I mean, it would be nice to get that fund reimbursed if, if that would be possible.
Why is it such a problem to just ask?
So I'm not putting my name on it.
Why?
Why not?
Cause I'm not gonna.
That's it? You're not gonna help the town out?
How's that?
It's an extension, the Conservation Commission is an extension of the town, and you're not willing to help them out. You're not willing.
I'll look into it for you.
What was that?
I'll look into it for you.
And when can I have an answer?
When I get up, get one.
We have no other business, no other public comments?
Uh, we do, we do have one non-public. It will be short.
Okay.
Yeah, it's for welfare.
Okay, I make a motion that we go into non-public for welfare. All in favor?
Aye.
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 We'll come back into public session, but just to seal and adjourn probably.
And I'll go through. I miss, which doesn't have to be in the meeting, you did outside the meeting.
We're pausing the recording for non-public. We're back.
Okay, I make a motion that we seal the minutes from the non-public session.
A second then.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. I make a motion that we adjourn.
Second then.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay.
Thank you. Good night.